Good morning.
Good morning.
So I wanted to talk, I'm going to be going over the Human Resources Department. All right, keep pushing it. All right, don't push. Okay. Our mission is nothing less than realizing our team's full potential and providing quality public service through mutual respect, trust, communication, and enhancement of community values. Our mission is to work together as a team, providing exceptional customer service based on ethical and transparent practices while promoting personal employee growth. This is our new org chart. So just, you know, a few little changes, nothing really significant from last year. Just kind of a little bit of a different format. Our HR metrics for 2023, we have 6.8% of our employees are the postal center, 24.7 are in admin, 34.2 are in public safety, you know, Public Works is, it should be Public Services, but it's 34.2. So council approved these positions last year, the analyst, the human resource analyst, another package services associate, two public works team leaders, which was part of our succession planning. We filled those internally. We've backfilled one, still have one to fill. Deputy Chief Law Enforcement Division. So we've kind of, the job description hasn't changed, but that's a title change. So when we brought Paul Homic on, we decided because of the information that Chief Gibson provided to us, that that is a better title for the position. Not changing job duties, but position title, like a working title. So that's what we are, we're doing law enforcement division. And then Paul Homic is going to be fire EMS. And then a senior treatment plant operator, which was also an internal promotion in Rockville, right, was promoted into that. And so we're still trying to backfill his position. Those positions are extremely difficult to fill. So we're still working on that, although I do have an application that sent to you.
Judy, before you go in, could you go back one?
How many of those are actually new positions? As far as are we looking at positions that were vacant?
So the analyst was new, the, both analysts were new. Let's see. Those were all new. Those were all new positions because we have the two captains that we eliminated one one year, right? And now looking at the organizational structure and the input from Chief Gibson, we decided to go ahead and put that back in, right? Because we really, we really need that divisions. So those were the new positions.
So there's net six new positions. Yeah, okay, great.
The staff turnover rate for 2023 was 10.8. And so it did go up last year. We did have, you know, a significant number, but we also had in that number also is included some retirees. So we had some retirees. Workman's comp claims last year, I mean, we had three. It went up, but it's still, you know, very low compared to other municipalities. We do a really good job. A lot of the workman's comp, sometimes it comes from the public services and they started back during COVID, they started doing a lot of internal training with the staff, doing the online proof. And I think they use North Carolina Lagan municipality has training modules and use a lot of codes. So our benefit usage, you know, that's one of our major expenses, right, is benefits from the salaries is our benefits. Our benefits average anywhere from 30% up to in the 40% of salaries is benefits. So it's significant. So for employee participation, we have 46% of employees participate in dependent life insurance, 35% do volunteer in life, 53% accident, 33% cancer, 25% critical illness, 13% do the hospital indemnity, and 60% are long-term care. A lot of that is not funded by the village, though. Those are the supplementals that employs the voluntary life, accident, cancer, critical illness, hospital indemnity, and long-term care. Are we offered to employees, but they pay the group rate. The village does not contribute to those. The 401K match that we implemented when we went through the social security and the employees hoping not to participate in that for that's participating, the match, we have 74% of employees participate at some level. Not all employees are doing the 4%, but we have 74% who are putting money in and the village is doing some match. So that was really good to see that, you know, they understand that planning for their retirement is important. Tuition assistance, we have 7% employee participation. So we tried, I know that there are ways out there who are going to school, but yet they don't want to do the participation. I'm not sure why. So we've talked to them, but it's it's up to them. So one of our big areas that we need to continue doing is the training. So organizationally, why training? We're going to do diversity, equity, inclusion, harassment prevention, cybersecurity, we've done the security awareness training. And those are the, some of the others, your role in internet security and you. So the cybersecurity is done through the, both of those will be done through the know before, which we, David implemented. So we'll use some of those training modules. Then for the leadership development, some will be in person and some will be through Cantola, which is another online that we'll be pushing as part of our supervisory development training for first-line supervisors. So we'll be sending out the modules, we'll be working on that, getting that together for the, you know, first-line supervisors. And then for the advanced training, we have two sessions. The school government is going to come back and continue what we had started before. We didn't do any last year, but we're going to do two this year. And Eleanor and Rick will be back. So that, we're really excited about that, that program. And we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from these employees, saying that it was very helpful. They liked it. They want us to continue doing it. And it's an excellent way for us to reach out to a lot of employees, the supervisors, without sending them all up to Chapel Hill. So it really is a very cost-effective way to train a group of individuals. And especially with all the new leadership down in, in public safety, even though we'll be, they'll be coming in the middle, we can go back and repeat some of the other classes too. So I'm excited about that.
Judy, but just for my own reference point, compared to other municipalities, is this like standard practice or we're doing more than other? Do you, do you have a feel for that at all?
Well, I would say for smaller municipalities, we're doing way more. Larger municipalities have a training staff.
Right, okay.
So we're not probably doing as much as they do because they have dedicated employees. You know, when I worked for Wake County back in the eighties, there was four people in the training department. Now they have a staff of 50.
Yeah, it's bigger than our whole group.
Right. So so I think we do a lot more than our size and we probably are compared to more of a mid-size. You know, we do quite a bit for, for the staff that we have available. That's why I outsource a lot because it is very helpful.
So this cybersecurity training, we had to do that last year, or I did.
Yeah, and then we'll be on, yeah, we'll do it annually.
Okay.
And Rick is gonna, he's really helping with the training and he'll be, he can set up when it will be sent out to employees. So a lot of this, the online stuff, yeah, it will be done annually. And as new ways come on, it's part of our onboarding process. And that's where you'll get some emails sometimes that are like phishing, some of it is through the company so that they can give us feedback. So they can say, oh, well, you've had people who, you know, and maybe they need to retake some of the modules. Right? So that we can get some feedback.
Yes, true.
Yeah, I got one from Chris this past week.
I thought David taught me just to delete them. So that's what I do. Is there something else I'm supposed to do?
Well, no, that's what you're supposed to do. But we have some people, you remember that, don't you, well, they don't use computers as much. I mean, they're, they're out and about. So they don't necessarily go on the computers as much and they might be looking on their phone or something and just see a name and click on it.
I don't know if we have it enabled, but it now look, there's, there's an opportunity to report something. It's a phishing attempt before you delete it and then it's IT aware, whether or not I was, it's enabled or not, but.
Like I got a, I got an email from Peter yesterday saying he hadn't seen me in a while. He wants to meet with me.
I get those all the time. No, I do. I mean, I get, no, not myself. Yeah.
So our previous year highlights, the MAPS plus patient case study implementation, and I'll go into that a little bit more detail in another slide. Successful village employee appreciation events. We've had three, you know, pretty big events. No, we always get a lot of positive feedback. Employees love getting together. We did the, so the new thing is we have NeoGo website to enhance our recruitment efforts. So that goes out for anyone who's looking for a government position. So it will really help in those positions that are unique to us, like public safety and for JP's staff. So anyone who's looking for those types of jobs can find us. So they don't necessarily have to go onto our website. They can go into the, the GOES job site and that will pop up. We've had the significant utilization of the 401K benefit by staff, as I said before. We're doing a foundational diversity, equity, and inclusion training. We implemented some of that and I have someone lined up who is going to be coming over and doing two sessions one day, and then we'll be doing a remote session for some more. And she also works, she has her own consulting company and she also works with the school government. So trying to find someone that we really, there's a lot of people out there, but there's not, you know, that maybe some of them aren't doing exactly what I wanted. And then Rick has found a couple other sources that we might do some lunch and learns with. We use developmental associates to, which was new for us, right, using a consulting firm to help in the recruitment process. For the public safety director, it was a great process. Josh can give you his input. It's a very grueling process that they put them through for the applicants. It allowed, we came out with the best candidate for the position. So it also enabled us to, it was a great learning experience. I learned a lot. Jay learned a lot on the other side and Chris, like it, it really helped us hone some of our skills when we're looking for some of those higher level positions and working on assessment centers and how we can utilize those, maybe not to that degree, but even some assessment centers when we're recruiting for positions.
Judy, can I just add too, we did utilize him as well for like the command staff level and the leadership level in public safety at the lieutenant level, where we had to fill two shifts from due to retirement. So we've been utilizing it in addition to the public safety director position. It's been very helpful.
Right.
And I was just going to add, I think it, it helped a lot with community acceptance. I think the, including key volunteers in the process, key people affiliated with public safety in the process and giving, allowing them input and seeing their input heard and listened to and, and getting the quality result, you know, I think win-win all the way around.
Yeah, it really was. I mean, it was costly, but it was money well spent. Um, as we said, the benefits are costly. So now because we do the ICRA, you know, for our health insurance, it's through the marketplace. So Medicare eligible employees can go through the ICRA for Medicare. So that's kind of a win-win too, because it's, it's a lot, when we go through ICRA, right, our health costs are based on our age in the marketplace. So when you convert those employees who can go on to Medicare, it saves us probably the village about a thousand dollars a month in costs. So currently we have two employees who have done that and will be getting ready to transition another employee soon on that. So of course they have to be eligible. So they have to be at that age. But so we are still working on our health costs. And then succession planning staff hires. So we had seven internal promotions in 2023. So I think we're doing a really good job of getting the people ready, providing them the training, providing them the mentorship, and then promoting them, and then continue the training and the mentorship with them. So we are doing a really good job with that. So if you look at that, that's probably what a 10%, we're promoting about 10% of our employees. So those are just the little shots of some of our events. So some of our goals for this upcoming year is to streamline the training systems to make it easier for employees to complete trainings. Train for the leadership and development succession planning. Develop department supervisors so they operate more efficiently and effectively. And hence the village diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, and harassment training. Develop some onboarding procedures for new hires and train for safety to our organization culture. And the onboarding is one of the things you can, you'll see another slide that was recommended by Becky is to have a more comprehensive, not just filling out paperhead, but really you have to think about people coming from private industry. And what does it mean to be a public servant? And what is our culture? And what are our departments? And what is a budget? Like we have a lot of employees who, they don't understand that it comes from tax dollar money, right? So they just think, oh, I can just spend this money. I can just ask for the money and they'll just find it. Well, no, it doesn't work that way. So there is like those pieces that you forget about when you're transitioning over. Employee of the year and years of service, those are two of our big events. We recognize birthdays, our work anniversary dates, Karen posts those in our, the newsletter that she does with us. And Mashana sends out birthday cards to all employees. And then different departments handle birthdays a different way. The administration, we do it quarterly because we all try not to eat so much sweets. And I'm sorry, cake, 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 cake. So we decided to just go to a, a, then we have pre and postseason cookout. And then our holiday celebration, which is a big event. Recruitment and retention. Where, like I said, we're using NeoGo, so we are trying to always improve our recruitment and our ability to reach other people. You know, newspapers, no one reads newspapers anymore. Indeed, I used that before and I, you get unindated with unqualified people. So it wasn't a good use of my time. Now, there might be a point where we might want to do that again, depending on the position. But to go through two, 300 applications and not get one that you can call in for an interview wasn't a good, good use of time. So we want to make sure that we stay regionally competitive in compensation and benefits. And we want to develop and retain our staff. We plan on doing a satisfaction assessment for employees to find out what they value, why, why they're staying. Some people call it stay interviews. So we'd like to find out what it is so that we can gear towards, you know, if they have a value in this, let's concentrate on that area. Participate in class and pay studies. We do that annually. The league puts out a annual class and pay study. So I always participate in that so that we can see how we compare. Now, there is a lag. It usually is a one-year lag. But that's something I look at in between when we do the big class and pay studies. Then we always look at some other municipalities do benefit studies and the league has started doing that. So I always, we always participate in that so that we can get that information back. Utilizing NeoGo to enhance our employee recruitment. Now, the NeoGo, we're only using it for, they're not screening our applications. It's just a way to get it out. I know this should probably give.
That's okay.
And then provide training opportunities for staff, the lunch and learn training opportunities. We also want to do financial wellness. So now that we've converted over to Empower, we're going to have someone come over. We lost our person, went up to Virginia from Prudential, and he had come over before and had one-on-ones with employees. So to help them, you know, if they wanted to figure out what's best for them, how to invest their money in the 401K, which to pick, should that be a goal maker? Should they, you know, pick their own investments? So we'll do that. We'll do the diversity, equity, and belonging, and then unconscious bias awareness. We'll do that. The school government is going to do the advanced supervisory training for our line supervisors. And then we do some individualized training, coaching sessions for departments and provide mentoring to new supervisors. Rick's been working closely with Steve at IPC, Steve Pavardis, and helping them. Is there a new, and they need more one-on-one. I've worked with JP's superintendents based on what, some feedback that I, they had given me that they wanted some training and some guidance for some areas. So we will do that. Develop enhanced onboarding process, incorporate standardized training procedures, utilizing some professional online platforms. Rick's in the process of working on that right now at CCE. So I'm excited about that. We'll continue our succession planning efforts and identify career growth opportunities within the village. Continue to review options for providing affordable healthcare and then recognizing employees, you know, by just our cookout celebrations, years of service, employee of the year awards. Again, the upcoming training, safety, this will be part of the onboarding process, slip trips of all prevention, back entry, back injury preventing, cybersecurity, and the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging in the workplace. And then the succession training will do that by offering the leadership development classes. So the financial wellness, that's a very important part that a lot of employees probably don't know as much as, you know, we'd like them to, but we want to make sure that they are financially secure so that they'll stay, right? We can retain them. The 401K match, as you can see by the number of participants, was a very positive thing for employees. I like to go merits up to 4% and historically we've done 3%. But there really, one to three, there really isn't that significant of a difference to really recognize your top performers. So there is some costs associated, but not everyone will be able to afford. Last year, everything came in, we did have that bell curve, right? So thinking who we're doing what we expected, we're given the correct amount. So there were a few that I had to go back to department heads and discuss, but they did a great job with that. But this way, top performers can really be recognized because there is a real significant difference. Cost of living, I put 4%. I don't know. The CPU, I think last I looked was 4.6, I think. No, what was it? Was that the average?
That was December, but we, for the budget purposes, we normally pull that number from February because that's right before we prepare the presentation.
So.
December is 3.12.
Right. So I think the average for the, I think that was 4.6, you know, looked at it, but I don't know. So that's what I put down. Training, we want to continue lunch and learn sessions with 401K providers so that they can have an opportunity because it's been years since we've done that. And it was probably because of COVID. And then participate in the annual pay study and the benefit study that the North Carolina Lagan municipalities does. So the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, we're committed to creating inclusive, equitable, sustainable culture and work environment. Workplace diversity is a collective mixture of differences and similarities that include individuals and organizational characteristics, values, beliefs, experience, backgrounds, preferences, and behaviors. So there's been a lot of, I've been reading on HR. So the most important thing actually is the inclusion. So that everyone, no matter what, knows that they have a voice and that they can be included, that their voice can be heard, whether, you know, that all, all opinions should be heard, right? It doesn't mean that necessarily it's going to be able to be implemented or it may take a while to be implemented. But everyone should feel like they can have their voice heard. So we are going to be doing some learning opportunities. Alyssa Capone, and she's a consultant and also a partner with the school of government. I had to go with her through her consulting firm because the school of government is already filled. So, but we will be doing that. And then you, Hanover County, I think Rick has reached out with someone over there and we're going to ask them to come over here and they're going to do some additional training. So we have a new policy or an expanded policy that we put into the policy, personnel policies that will be hopefully approved at the council meeting today. So our health insurance status. So we are still working with our brokers to make sure that we are always seeking out, is there any other opportunities? Now, we're getting to that magic number that we might be able to get someone to get us into a group plan. Because we are large, but at 50, with our experience rating, and they can go out and see our experience rating, they are not willing to take us on. But at fifty, with our experience rating and they can go out and see our experience rating, they are not willing to take us on. So I did speak with, um, Gallagher, um, this past fall. And they said they might potentially be willing to look at. So they have another, um, smaller municipality on the coast. And they have similar experiences as us, but they have more employees and they put them in their group. So fingers crossed, I'm gonna hopefully see them, um, in March and have conversations. So I, I continually try to keep those lines open.
What kind of health plan do we offer?
So we have, um, it's called the ICRA and it's through the marketplace because we are unable to secure. Yes, it meets all the requirements, right? So we don't have to pay any penalty. Um, but it's just, uh, costly. We have it through the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Right.
And the cost is gonna be two point six million dollars a year.
Okay.
So it was unaffordable. Um. So we re, currently we reimburse a full cost of insurance premium for staff and stipend for dependent, um, who are enrolled through the ICRA program. So what we'll explore is if the state opens up, last time I talked to the treasurer, they said potentially twenty twenty-six. But I don't know because now, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield lost that contract that's going to Etna. So I don't know, right? So I'll have to reach back out and see. Um, other insurance groups specialize on, so Gallagher was one that I had on my, um, target that I'm gonna reach out to. And then for now, letting Medicare eligible employees, um, having the option to, um, just enroll through the ICRA. So here, um, Rick is a human resource analyst. Rick, go ahead. So he's been a very welcome addition, um, and he's been doing a great job. So what he's done so far. Uh, he's done the NeoGov implementation, um, setting up the known for me trend system to do the pushouts. Um, just working on the open enrollment, coordinating the diversity, equity, inclusion training. Um, and then he has worked with IPC and Public Works in the hiring, um, processes, help them do their recruitment. Um, developing questions and actually sitting in on, um, the interview process and the selection. Um, he's done some supervisory mentoring, um, as I stated earlier with IPC. Um, working on some unemployment claims, trying to get them acclimated to some of the other things that we have to do. Um, and then working on the holiday and staff celebrations. Um, the essentials, we need the hiring, recruitment, interviewing, onboarding, training. Um, facilitating staff collaboration on conflicts. Um, personnel policy interpretation, policy research and development, workers comp and unemployment insurance. Um, so he's worked on the, the onboarding is, um, in process now. He did a few slides and really did. Um, automation, so we'd like to do, that's one of my goals, is to make sure, um, that some of the personnel policies are not on. So we'd like to get them onto our website, like a lot of municipalities have, so that people can just go to the website, download the forms that they need and they're all there. Um, and then working with this, with the succession planning, staff coaching and professional fellow. So I don't really have one specific area. I'm trying to bring him in in different pieces and working on projects as we, um, as they come up with the priorities, just trying to push things out and then filling him in. I do a lot of sitting, um, with him to just, okay, this is something that I've dealt with. This is how the outcome was. This is why we've done it. So that kind of mentoring, um, so be nice if you can just do the brain drain, but it just takes time. So I hope that kind of gives you some idea of what I have them working. So the classification and pay study, um, the, um, Becky Beesley and the MAPS script. Um, so that was, um, again, another, uh, big study. Um, policy recommendations for inclusion. Um, so we discussed, um, the and you, you have copies of what is on the resolution for this afternoon's meeting. Um, that the village managers authorized to create procedures for emergency disaster event pay. Um, and other procedures as necessary or as needed. Uh, because each emergency and disaster kind of looks different, right? As we've seen. So, uh, we need the options to be able to be flexible with that. Um, but we expanded the, um, equal employment opportunity and diversity, equity and inclusion policy. Um, we have flexible work arrangements. That's a new policy and name clearance hearing. So we've been doing these, um, but now it's officially being put into the policy.
Judy, um, flexible work arrangements, um, is that specific to, um, working from home? How frequent, we, we have a very distinct policy is I guess working from home.
So we have, uh, we have distinct procedures and employees, so it's kind of like an agreement that they have to sit down with their supervisor or manager. Department heads have to sign off on it. So the policy itself is kind of more shortened scope. But the procedures for that, um, gives a lot of information. So, and that could be working for tens. It could be working like an alternate kind of work schedule. It could, um, you know, and it could be for a, a short period of time, could be for a longer period of time. Um, so really, and some people just, their jobs don't allow for it, right?
No, I got, I got.
So, but yeah, so it is something that's formal, um, and I have the, we have a couple of people who, you know, formally have done that. Um, but not really that many. Um, so we have some new classifications that were recommended, the, uh, finance analyst, the human resource analyst, project manager. Public works crew leader, the senior treatment plant operator. Um, and then well, that's public service services associate, that, uh, the package services associate. That's actually not a new classification, um, but that was just recommended, um, having another person. Um, and then the utility maintenance crew leader, we just titled it senior utility maintenance mechanic. Salary grade assignments for jobs, uh, based on both meeting the market average, um, and being, so that we can be slightly ahead. Um, and that's typically, historically, that's what the village has always done, right? We've always been in the top. And, um, and again, the council approved that and that was implemented in, um, April. So I'm just continue supporting staff with COLA, VAERS, tuition assistance, ongoing professional development, flexible work arrangements. Pay initiatives for certifications is another, uh, thing that I'll be working on. Succession planning, employee recognition and just creating that positive work culture.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
One question. Just one question. You've covered a lot of ground. I, I commend you and your staff for all you've done to improve the professionalism of the department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. And I think, um, it's very impressive. The only question I would have is we've got a couple customer facing positions. I think the IPC mostly. In the training modules, is there any customer service type component to that? How to deal with customer?
There will be. On the onboarding, yes, that will be a part of that, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.